Welcome to our public hearing on the budget and also our regular meeting of May 4th. Would you please stand and join us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members may please have a motion to move out of the executive session.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we begin our review of the budget in our public comments section, I would like to say a few opening words. The Board of Education believes that we are presenting to the public a budget that enhances the well-being of all of our students, that it is structured to support our instructional program and goals of the district, and it shows that our students are worthy of our wise investment. Fiscal responsibility has always been important in Webster. When the Board of Education approves a school budget, we recognize that we are spending your money and we take that very seriously. This proposed budget maintains a balance between sustaining the integrity of our educational program while observing the community's call to stay within a tax cap limit and ensure fiscal responsibility for our taxpayers. So Brian, would you provide the public with the main points?
Sure, I'd love to. Thanks everyone for coming this evening. I'm sure the has nothing to do with the award ceremony coming up and everything to do with the budget hearing tonight. So I just want to start off with, because what's the real point where we're here at this budget hearing is for the students and what are some of those student accomplishments that we've seen over the past year? Webster has a 95% graduation rate, over $2.8 million in college scholarships, and significant positive work on advanced placement exams this past year. You know, this past year also was the first year we've been fully implemented with the one-to-one student device initiative with the transforming learning through technology. We've introduced mindfulness into the schools. For the 12th time, we're a top music community, so a lot of just great things going on in Webster. And what is our budget doing for us? What's driving? Here's some of those end results as we move from on a year-to-year basis. So what were some of those factors that influenced the budget process this year? Well, this was the sixth year of the tax levy limit, or the tax cap as it's also referred to. And CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which is benchmarked for our tax cap, was 1.26, greater than last year but still not at the 2% that's allowable by law. And there were some changes last year on some additional exemptions through BOSIs, but there was no guidance issued at all through this process on those approved changes, so we still weren't sure what was going to happen with that. So hopefully in the next year, maybe we'll get the guidance from Division of Budget. But we overall, we're six straight years either being at or below the cap, so all residents will be eligible for the New York State rebate program coming this fall, which is $185. Might remember, the checks probably went out in October, early November, right around election time, which will more than cover any year-to-year increase. We've also had significant benefit cost increase, and minimum wage is a true impact on the district. We have roughly 545, give or take a couple, employees that are at minimum wage or were hovering near it at the January 1 changeover. Now, a significant amount of those is we have substantial programs at the Aquatic Center, summer work help programs, so a lot of them are student workers, but we run, we do a lot of programs that are dependent on that. So that will impact our budget. But we did see some pension cost savings. As the stock market goes, so does the pension system, so they had some pretty strong returns in the teachers' retirement system, so we saw a decrease in that rate moving forward. So some things, what did this budget accomplish? So, one too many. We were able to stay within the cap, and that's a great thing. Anytime you can do that, stay within the cap, especially in a small year. We did add one position, a 1.0 for an audiologist. No savings next year because there's going to be some startup costs getting that program up and running, but the years after that, 18, 19, and beyond, we should see substantial savings between what we're doing in-house, the costs, versus what we were shipping out to BOSIs and the costs that they were charging us. We were able to maintain all programs, no cuts. UPK grant, we reconfigured, bringing more students in-house into Webster buildings. We'll be at Schlegel Road next year with two new sections, bringing that total amount to about 170 kids. So that's a 1.0 FTE, but that's not impacting our budget because that's all within the grant. Maintain reserve usage, similar to '16, '17, where we don't want to spend any more of our reserves. So we're maintaining the same levels, no more, no less, just maintaining. And really, this budget season, we started to see a reflection with the one-to-one initiative that the current structure of a lot of our classrooms isn't designed for that. So we saw a lot of the building principals, a lot of the directors starting wanting to shift funds into equipment, equipment lines for different types of classroom furniture, multi-modal, high bistro tables to small beanbag chairs, so that adapt to the technology So here's our summation, just a couple things I want to point out. You see the equipment line being a little bit higher, but that's not just all furniture for classrooms. We've had some music and Project Lead the Way commitments as we've gone further every year with the Project Lead the Way. New courses require new types of specialized equipment, so some items there. But really, our big drivers of the budget are BOSI services, we're spending more there, and our benefits, as you can see, overall, just a 2.5% increase. So 91% of our budget is spent on four areas. Our largest is obviously salaries, benefits. BOSIs would be our third, and then our debt service, what we borrow for capital improvement projects. Really, the four largest portions of the budget. I always like to show this because it really, if you look at it the opposite way, we always spend 9% on everything else. So I always think that's an interesting way to look at it. For textbooks, supplies, that equipment, fuels, energies, you know, contracts, things like that, really is just 9% of our overall budget. So our three-part budget, this is the way we're required to break it down. For the state, everybody across the, it really has to be into three parts. First is a administrative component. That's really all the back office operations, support areas, and building administration is what would fall under administration. Program is anything to do with students. If it touches students, including transportation, would be go to program. And then capital is facilities maintenance, and our debt service on facilities maintenance. So overall, what does that look like as a breakdown? 78% we spend on program, 7% on admin, and 15% on capital. Same exact ratios as last year and the year before. So we've stayed fairly consistent. And there's the totals for our budget and what they're broken down to. So administrative budget, just to look at some of those changes, up 2.91%, and really the large driver there is the benefits that are charged to the administrative budget. And you might see a larger bump for finance. That is, we are beginning to convert all of our employee files digitally, so the software to do that is a little bit more expensive, but we feel like we'll get that back over the years in labor, for sure, and efficiency. So it's just a direction to clear out some space on the third floor that we want to head into and do the 21st century. On the program side, you'll notice our professional development costs are up a little bit more. Seems like a large percent, but overall, that's a very small part of the budget, and that's a lot to do with our BOSIs program. Computer instruction also is a little bit higher, but that's all our software. A lot of our network and things like that are through BOSIs. So those increases don't really rise with rate of inflation. We're at control of who wins bids, vendors, and things like that with a lot of those costs. So they're a little higher than trend in that area. And then you notice the recreation, that is our continuing ed programs, the Aquatic Center programs, and you see a larger increase there because they're the most impacted by the minimum wage increase. So you see a greater increase there because we have, you know, hundreds of kids that are lifeguards or classroom or learn-to-swim instructors, so it's a significant cost increase there for us. But still about 2.59% overall, so the overall is fairly well in line.
Do we pass that call to our customers?
We've actually, we haven't changed the overall pricing. What we've done is we've actually expanded the program to Sundays now for six hours on Sundays to increase our-
Okay, so there's more income. You've offset with more income.
More income, yeah. To increase it. And we still have a waitlist on all nights and weekends, even after the expansion of the program up to Sundays.
Thank you.
And then capital is one of our simpler demonstrations of the budget. That is just our facilities maintenance and our debt service and transfers to capital. We've started this program now in its third year, the $100,000 capital project. We've completed two, one at Thomas, one at Plank South, and next will be Clem South, and we'll just keep that cycle going, spend $100,000 in construction. That is outside of what we do in-house, because the state has a program, they'll give us 70% of it back in state aid the following year. But 1.8% increase overall on the capital budget. So our fiscal report card from State Department of Ed that we're required to publish every year at this time, really it's on a lag as far as the timeframe. This is based on '14, '15 data as we're approaching '17, '18. You see that Webster is significantly below all New York State districts in our general ed, about 2,000. Notice in special education, we are a little higher compared to some other districts, but when you blend all the costs together, Webster is still significantly less by almost $4,000 compared to all New York State districts in total per pupil cost. And you see how the state breaks it down, what's included and what's not, on a year-to-year Now, talk a little bit about the revenues, where they're coming from. See, our two main revenue sources are property tax and state aid, make up 90% of our overall revenue. Just want to pay close attention to a couple things on this. See our reserves and our sales tax, where those numbers are at. Sales tax is 4% right now, but I want to just rewind a little bit to 1994, '95 and see what our sales tax was then compared to now. So we've lost almost 2% of that as the total budget compared to '94, '95. And you see where the shifts happen, you know, even state aid is less as a percentage of the budget now as compared to '94, '95. And so you see those changes. Where obviously could they go? You see, it's been shifted over to the tax levy because that's the only place we can go when the state does not give us as much as we used to. So contingent budget, we always have to talk about what is a contingent budget? If voters do not approve the budget, Board of Education may seek another vote in June with same or different budget, or implement a contingent budget right away. So what does that mean? That's the process, what comes next. So it's really all based on the tax cap and taxes levied. So no matter what, the tax levy, if you adopt a contingent budget, cannot be greater than the prior year. You have to remove some certain items from the budget, like always, but no matter what, you cannot levy more than the prior year if you're adopting a contingent budget. So what would that mean for us? So we'd have to remove about $1.8 million from the budget, those are our contingent items. So where would we make that up? It would really leave us only to find revenue for $164,000. By taking out those contingent items, it almost takes away our entire tax levy, so we just need to come up with another $164,000 in a contingent budget, since it would revert back to where we were. So a little bit on property taxes, you know, three things go into a property tax: equalization rate, assessment, and what is the tax levy? So using current equalization rates, you know, those can change over the summer, usually by July, find out what they are. But Penfield's 100, Webster's 88, Ontario and Walworth are both equalized at 100. And if you look at our five-year assessment growth, we've trended at about 1.53% over five years. So taking those factors into account and what our tax levy is, what would our tax rates look like? So overall, true tax would go up about 11 cents per thousand, overall about a half a percent. So what does that mean for our average household, which has increased over year-to-year? We're up to, the average Webster residence is $182,800 in value, so the housing values are going up anywhere from $19 to about $22.75 a year impact, depending on what municipality within the district you live. Now, these are just estimates because I'm looking at trend data and what's on the books now, but when we go to do the warrant in August, you know, who knows what the equalization rate would be? You know, at this time last year, the equalization rate for Ontario was 97, and for Webster it was 90. Those two things shifted in the two months in between the budget hearing and when we adopted the warrant. So some things can change, but this is our best guess of where we'll be come August, when everything is set and done. So if you look at what our historical tax rate changes are, going back to '04, '05, you see our rates have decreased and they have gone up. The trend of going up, sorry, you know, right here, 10, 11, 13, 14, it's when we had the GEA and the Great Recession, so you see, obviously, taxes went up to help offset some of those pullbacks in state aid. And then one of the other items I just wanted to point out is where we're at with some of our comparison schools. Webster right now, and this is just a simple calculation, you take our levy divided by student population, and we levy $9,621 per student. The average on the east side of Monroe County is 10,751. So we're $1,130 less per student in tax revenue than the average east side Monroe County district. That's why we're able to keep our expenses, expenditures lower than most of our comparison So a couple propositions, just to go over. First is our bus proposition. Generally, we trade our buses in around 10 years, 100,000 miles, you know. Every year, there could be a nuance here or there, squeeze, you know, 12 years out of some buses, some could only last eight, depending on make or model. But we have 14 buses, 11 traditional, two smaller 30-passenger buses, and then one wheelchair bus is up for replacement. So that's the second, actually, first proposition, but second item on the ballot that you'll see, first being the budget vote. Proposition one will then be bus purchase. And then next will be Board of Education candidates. Community residents will be asked to select two individuals for three-year terms beginning July 1, and one person for a one-year term beginning July 1. So the top two vote-getters will get the three-year seats, and then the third vote-getter will get the one-year seat to finish out Mr. Dede's term from his resignation in January. So a little bit different than in years past, a little nuanced change from a traditional Vote will be in just about 12 days at the Webster-Schrader High School Gymnasium from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Hope to see you there. It's a reminder, it will be bright and early, rain or shine, and go right through to 9:00 PM. This will be our third go-around with the electronic voting machines, so Cindy and myself are old pros at this now, so we feel comfortable. And last year at this time, we're kind of worried, it's our first time with the electronic voting machines, and how that would work out. But since then, we feel pretty confident in moving forward. Any questions on anything I presented?
From the board? Then we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone in the audience wishes to make a comment on the budget or ask a question, please come Seeing none, we will end our public comment session of the budget.
So they weren't here for the public hearing?
Sorry. Sorry, Scoop. I hope we didn't hurt your feelings. All right, we'll move into our regular Board of Education business. Board members, you've had a chance to take a look at the agenda. We do have an addition. We're going to add a personnel item to our consensus agenda item.
I'll make that motion.
Well, is there any other additions?
I'm sorry, you're right.
All right, so the motion by Sue to accept the agenda, it's been second, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our agenda stands as is. The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. This public comments section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen, and as a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the board in order to protect individual rights, and matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. With that being said, is there anyone here present who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to our student liaisons. Welcome Stacy and Chris, come on up.
Sam.
Or Sam, why did I say Stacy? Because I saw this, yeah.
I get that a lot, I'm kind of used to that. All right. The fancy name tag, you know.
Yeah.
Loud and clear, right? There you go. All right, good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe it's already May, five months into the new year. Probably due to the moody weather of Webster, it makes it seem like it's still winter. And so at Thomas and pretty much everywhere, this week starts AP exams for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I'm pretty lucky as a freshman, I don't have to go through any of that stress right now, but next year I will, and I'm not looking forward to it. The Best Buddies Friendship Walk is coming up this Saturday, May 6, at Genesee Valley Park, and this walk is aimed to raise awareness and funds to support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Sign-in starts at 10 o'clock and the walk starts at 11:00. Festivities end at 1:00. Webster Thomas has a team, and we would like to invite everyone in our community to participate in the walk or donate to our team. In other news, Thomas Jr., Michael O'Connor placed in second in New York State for the Automated Manufacturing Tech Teams Competition, and we're pretty proud of them. Upperclassmen are also looking forward to their junior prom and senior ball coming up this month. It's just a couple weeks away. In the news of sports, we're wrapping up the season as sectionals approach on May 19. Weather is still a challenge, but Thomas had the best kayaking team in Monroe County. Our Webster Unified Basketball Team game against Greece tipped off at 4:30, and I heard that they did a pretty good job. They have had a great season so far, and I know that everybody has been having so much fun at those games, and I think it's a great opportunity for all of them, and you know, their smiles on their faces, I think that's a pretty awesome program that we have set up for that. And tomorrow is the Webster Thomas Dance Team Showcase at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. If you would like to come, this supports the Jack Foundation, so it's for a pretty good cause, and I heard it's going to be a pretty great show. So that's all that I have, and any questions, we'll move on. Chris?
Thank you, Sam.
All right. Good evening, board members. Like Sam said, it's AP week, and AP started this past Monday morning with the AP Chemistry exam, and will finish next Friday with the AP European History exam. Somehow, I managed to get both of those, so I started it and now I ended it. But no fret though, teachers have been preparing us very well, and we've been all studying very religiously, so time to take off the class and end the year on a good note. May 1 was a big day for many Schrader students because that was College Decision Day, so a lot of students came in with their college apparel on or military apparel if they chose that path. So, you know, I want to just thank all my teachers and everyone who, you know, has helped my educational experience. It's been a wonderful 12 years here, and, you know, it's nice to see, you know, all my classmates going to different places because I know that Webster-Schrader prepared them very well. The Schrader family would like to congratulate Kathy Nguyen and Hannah DeChalise for winning the first and second place in the poetry division, the Monroe County Library Systems Annual Sukul High School Literary Awards. What a fantastic war for some very fantastic poetry. One of the final speech and debate tournaments of the season was the state tournament at Hostelry University on Long Island. Schrader and Thomas teams went to the tournament, and 14 Schrader students went to this very competitive tournament. It was a two-day tournament as well, so a lot of speaking and a lot of lost voices afterwards. And we would like to especially congratulate Stephanie McCarthy and Lex King for getting to the semifinals of the Duo Interpretation Event, a very, very competitive one. So congratulations to them and their hard work with Ms. Hamm and Mrs. Connelly truly paid off. The spring season has started out very well for the Warriors. Currently, the Warriors baseball team is first in the state and in Section 5, and is undefeated right now as we speak. Last night, they beat Greece Arcadia 12 to 4 to continue their undefeated record. The softball team has also been enjoying some recent success. Last night, they beat the Thomas Titans 4 to nothing, and it looks like they're going to do pretty well in sectionals this year, being that they're defending champions. The Boys varsity tennis team has won also four straight matches, and last night they beat Canadega 7 to nothing. And we wish them luck today at Batavia right now, if the weather allows for it, with their match currently underway. We would also like to congratulate John Spiker of the tennis team, who won the Democrat and Conical Scholar-Athlete Award for the week, so huge congratulations, that's a huge honor for him. We're happy that John represents us on the court and in the classroom. And today, like Sam said, Webster, the Unified Basketball Team tipped off today at 4:30, and we are very proud of our Lakers. It's just a great thing that we have, you know, the two high schools coming together instead of competing against each other. And also, as we speak, the Boys varsity lacrosse team is home against Canadega, and they're playing currently, so the Warrior crew is out in numbers to support them. And with the high school year coming to a close and more exams soon to come, the Schrader staff and students have made it a very enjoyable, you know, even in these stressful times. You know, we are reminded every day that we're more than a grade and that, you know, we're more than what we're putting on the piece of paper, so we'd like to thank all the teachers and the faculty and staff for reminding us during, you know, these times of stress. So thank you. Is there any questions?
Yes, Chris. We know you're a senior, and we know the school year is coming to a close, and if you're a typical senior, we're never sure if you're going to come to the last board meeting. So the Board of Education has been very impressed with your presence the last few years and the fact that you've represented the students of Schrader in true Webster fashion. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors, and we would like to present you with a little token of our appreciation for a job well done as representing Schrader to the board.
Thank you.
You've got a tough act to follow, Sam. Where are you going to school next year?
Next year, I'll be attending University at Buffalo with a focus in biochemistry under pre-med track.
Oh, are you going to be in the governor dorm for the honors program?
It looks like Ellicott. It looks like, it looks like Ellicott, and I plan to possibly go on to medical school with a PhD program along with that, so.
I had two sons go to UB very well.
Yeah, it's a wonderful school. I'm really happy that was my choice.
Well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
And thank you both of you.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. For our next item, I'm going to be a teacher for a moment. And a teacher is always going to ask the students a question. So my question is, why is the award given to Webster teachers called the Oak Tree Award? Well, if you're a student of literature, you know that oak trees from ancient times have had symbolic meanings. Symbolizing courage and strength, the oak tree is believed to be the most powerful of trees. And observing the oak's massive growth and impressive expanse, ancient Celts took this as a clear sign that the oak was to be honored for its endurance and its noble presence, representing awe that is true, wholesome, and noble. The ancient Greeks considered the oak a cosmic storehouse of wisdom embodied within its towering strength, referencing them to their elders who had known and witnessed many things. While our next two guests have known and witnessed many things. Wendy and Lisa, would you like to introduce this year's recipients of the Oak Tree Award?
We sure would.
From Plank South, we have Stacy Rosati, and I had the-
From Plank South, we have Stacy Rosati, and I had the great pleasure to kind of mug her during a, during a school-wide assembly and surprise her, and it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. We got it on film, as far as I know. Sent her with a small bouquet of flowers and got applause from everybody in the school. An equally exciting moment was Dave Kowalski over at Willink, and we mugged him during his own morning show. And it was very difficult because he met me, and I, and I had to be surreptitious about why I was there, so I don't know how long it took for the penny to drop. They're both very worthy, great and interesting classrooms they have, and I don't really want to say a whole lot more, because I'd like to, like them to join us. This is the 17th year of the Oak Tree Awards, so we're kind of coming up on a milestone in the next couple of years. There's a lot that goes along with this. The people are nominated either through public, through the public, through parents, the community, or through students or faculty members. There's a, there's a whole process that goes along with this. They have to fill out a lot of paperwork, they have to contemplate what their education philosophy is, and demonstrate that they're really a big part of the community as well as a big part of the school. And the only thing that comes along with this is a lovely laid pen, a little tiny pin, and a teeny tiny check.
And a plaque.
And the plaque, which they get, they get to, they get to show off for a year. So, they get to take that home with them and hide that in their car overnight.
Take some selfies, maybe.
We'll take some selfies. So if you guys would like to share?
Yeah, I'm completely, I'm very honored to receive this award, but it, it's hard to accept the award being just myself as a teacher, because it's really everyone around me who has made me the person that I am. It doesn't matter which building I have been in, which I've been in several, or which position I've been in, just a normal sub to a long-term sub to a probationary teacher, you know, it doesn't matter where I have been. Every team I've worked with has surrounded me and supported me and helped me become the person that I am, and we all bring out the best in each other, so I really feel it should go to all those people that I've worked with over the years as well.
You're on a wonderful team.
I am, and they're here too.
I was a little worried, Mr. Sufaleto. I thought that question was going to come to me that you asked, and I thought, oh, I might blow the thing here, but it was interesting.
I'm surprised you didn't run away, because usually when I saw you, I always have a computer question for you.
Oh, yeah. But, but I'm thrilled to be here. This means, means a lot to me, mainly for two reasons. One, these, I look at these teachers, and they are literally my teacher heroes. I've been lucky enough to work with many of them, and I look at the names, and, and just the, the fact that my name is going to be in that group, it's something I will treasure for forever. It means a lot. My, my friend, you know, Debbie Fiesel is here, she's on the board from last year. Debbie is so great, she was using Palm Pilots before we even knew what, before they even made iPhones, and with second graders, and these kind of people. There are so many, like Stacy said, that deserve this award, and I've learned, I've worked with them, and I've learned so much from each and every person I've worked with, and, and so I feel like they have contributed to everything that I have. The other thing, the reason why it's so important, is I take this job really seriously, and I think about probably too much how I can do my job the best I can with the help from my colleagues, and there's, there's unlimited potential for improvement, which I love about this job, I can always get better. And the recognition that you've given Stacy and I this year means so much, because we care so much, and we're grateful, we're thankful, and I'm honored. Thank you very much.
Can I make one last question?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that this is jointly supported between WTA and PTSA, and I'm at the feet of this, but definitely not the brains, and there's a whole committee that gets together, and we couldn't do it without PTSA.
Yeah.
So we will be putting up applications for this next year, starting in August. I hope people come up with more great candidates.
So Wendy, and Lisa and Stacy, thanks so much for making this award possible, and if I could just say one, on a personal note, my oldest daughter, who's about to graduate, had Stacy in fifth grade, and Stacy, that was the part of your career where you were a long-term sub for Ms. Getman, who was out of maternity. And, and I just remember that in fifth grade, Gracie began to have some medical challenges, and Stacy was just so incredible with my daughter when, when it first was started, when, when everything was starting with her, and I just, you know, we knew then, my wife and I knew then, that Stacy just had the it factor for teachers, and, and was able to make those connections with kids, and we will always be indebted to the kindness that you showed my daughter, so thank you so much. And Dave and I talked together, we were both science teachers for the longest time, and he outlasted me, obviously, but, but I remember, Dave, we've, we've had many conversations around education, and I just remember thinking, you know, I needed to be more and more like Mr. Wizard and Mr. Kowalski, and whether it was connecting with kids, or using hands-on experiments, or using the technology and the websites, and we talked a lot about that, but, you know, it's, it's such a great job to be surrounded by such inspirational colleagues. And, you know, Stacy, you're right, you're surrounded every day by your colleagues at, at Plank South, and Dave, I'm sure you feel the same way with, with your colleagues at Willink. And yet, you know, we have Wendy and Lisa and Stacy who are able to, you know, pull this type of recognition, because you don't do it for the recognition, but it does feel really good to, to be able to say, you know what, wonderful representatives for our profession. So, but thank you for all that you do, and again, thank you to PTSA and WTA for, for making this possible.
Thank you.
But Dave doesn't, Dave doesn't sing as well as you do. All right, should we give the audience a few minutes to kind of, they'll probably all leave now.
Well, how appropriate that we are recognizing Mrs. Rosati and Mr. Kowalski, as we are also celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, or Staff Appreciation Week. So be sure to all of our, all of our parents and our students, be sure to take a moment to thank the teachers in our one Webster district that make a difference in the lives of all of our kids. Every day, they show me how committed they are to our vision, which is compassionately connected, joyfully engaged, and always learning. I'm sure the Board will agree that there are those teachers you remember for your life. How grateful I am, actually, how grateful I am to be sitting next to one of my teachers that I remember here to my right, and then Mrs. Streggy over to my left, who taught me reading in second grade. So these words are actually, and I just made that connection now. I should have, I should have made the connection when I was writing this, or when Krista was writing it for me, but, so. It's all right, it's okay. This is always so well done, people know I don't do it, right? So while you're thanking a teacher, also be sure to express your gratitude to our school nurses, who get their own day of appreciation next Wednesday, May 10th. This is another group of outstanding professionals who care for the health and well-being of our students. We are fortunate to have an excellent nursing staff in Webster, and I wanted to personally acknowledge their ongoing services, service to our students. And on a sadder note, we had unfortunately Mrs. Mary Jo Hall, Hole? I was, I can never remember how to pronounce her last name, but Mary Jo, the longtime nurse at Schlegel Road, who passed away after a very brief illness earlier in the week. And so as I'm reflecting on what next Wednesday will mean for all of our nurses in this district and in other districts, I think of Mary Jo's dedication to our students and her commitment to, you know, not only the Schlegel community, but our entire community at large. And she and her husband had many children that went through the Webster, five children that went through the Webster District, so our condolences and our prayers go out to Mary Jo's family. Many thanks to Mr. Freeman for his presentation earlier this evening, and on our proposed 17-18 budget. I'd like to remind the entire Webster community to exercise your right to vote on our budget, and also elect members to the Board of Education. In 12 days, Tuesday, May 16th, Webster Schrader Gymnasium, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You don't need to be registered to vote in our elections, but you do need to be a resident of our district and with proper identification. And also by way of reminder, the Webster PTSA will once again host a Board of Education Meet the Candidates Night next Wednesday, May 10th, here in this auditorium. It begins at 7:00 PM, and it's an opportunity for everyone to meet and hear from our four candidates running for three positions on our Board of Education. Finally, our community will receive a budget newsletter in your mail this coming week with more information on our proposed budget, and it's in a new format this year. It's, it's actually in accordion style, we're going to try that format, it just seemed a little bit easier to read, and seemed to give us a little bit more real estate, per se, to get some facts and figures out there. Lastly, I would like to thank the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, known as SEPTA, for their annual bowling scholarship fundraiser, held on April 9th, just a few weeks ago. Mr. Sufaleto and I were on the same team, and I think he beat me in the first game, and I beat him the second, but yeah, but either way, we were both really bad. So, but we were a little bit better than Mr. Guston, so that's always good. So it is, it is organized on, it's organized by Dina Malboof, who's a Webster Thomas High School Special Ed teacher, and her team, and they recruited 100 bowlers, again, including Mr. Guston, and Mrs. Sufaleto and I, and Young Sufi as well, along with seven sponsors this year. We had, we had a blast, and you can see from some of these pictures, we did have some fun, and more importantly, more than $4,000 was raised to fund scholarships for our graduating seniors. So thanks to all who participated and had, and had a role in making this such a successful afternoon, and it was filled with fun and laughter, and unfortunately for Mr. Sufaleto and I, not enough strikes. So that ends my report.
Let's move on to our Treasurers' Report. Brian?
Sure, this is just the March Treasurers' Report, and just one thing to point out, March is one of our larger increases in state aid. Generally, we get our first huge state aid payment in the month of March. So you see about 25% of our entire state aid comes in the month of March, so you'll see that on the Treasurers' Report, and I just wanted to point that out. Other than that, everything is fairly status quo, our rates are still the same, and changeover from the First Niagara to Key Bank has been completed.
Then may we have a motion, please, to accept the report?
I'll mic it, motion.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. If you would, please, Board members, let's pull out your calendars, and let's take a look at the draft of the Board of Education calendar. Immediately, we have to figure out when we would like to have our goal-setting day. I strongly suggest that we have it somewhere between July 6th and before July 17th. It usually runs us about five, six hours.
Yeah, last year we were, last, last year we went 12 to 5, I think, right?
Is anyone on vacation any of that time?
12 to 7, okay.
You're leaving the 15th? Oh, then, then we'll do it the 14th. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. So you're, you're here? I'm, I'm not going to be on vacation at that point. Are you around?
Yeah.
What, what time would it be?
Well, we haven't decided. We're just trying to figure out, first of all, is there any days we have to eliminate, you know, to start?
I'm free all day on the 7th, but I think I'm babysitting the mornings, the following, I think my daughter-in-law's doing a morning course, just Monday through Thursday.
Well, and how are you?
Of the following.
How are you on the 11th, 12th, or 13th, that Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
If it were noon, you were saying?
Yeah.
I could do Tuesday or Thursday, and Wednesday, I could be there at 1:00-ish.
Should we try for the 11th?
Tuesday sounds better.
Yeah.
So Tuesday, 11th. Do we want to do morning, or?
Are you babies? I'm babysitting.
Oh, you're baby, so, so we can't, we wouldn't start until after, what, 1:00? Is that best for you, or noon, or what?
12:30, probably.
12:30?
12:30.
Why don't we do 12:30 with a lunch, and then to 6:00, maybe? We'll plan to?
Yeah, well, you know, we'll figure out an agenda.
All right. We do need to do a super-evaluation, not a super, well, it's going to be a super-evaluation, but we need to do a superintendent evaluation. In the past, we waited, we got all the metrics in. I don't know if you want to do that, or if you feel comfortable. Would you feel comfortable in going longer on the 11th and doing not only a goal-setting, but also a superintendent review?
Well, we're going to, actually, our next board meeting, we're going to do the metrics. So it, it won't be, you know, it won't include all the test scores by the end of the year, but it, you know, it'll be updated, you know, to a point.
We actually did that once, Mike, we actually combined, it was July of 15, we actually did what, exactly what you're saying. We did the evaluation for about an hour and a half at the very beginning, and then we worked, we worked our way into the goals.
Would the 11th then be, you know, rather than?
Do it all?
Yeah. I think we can get everything done by 7:00 o'clock. I mean, if we started with the eval and went into board goals, I think we can go 12:30 to 7:00 and have more than enough time. You guys are okay with that?
I mean, if we could maybe take a half-hour walk in between?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We could actually go see the, the greenhouse in actual effect.
Yes, we could.
Yeah, oh, whatever.
The, now, the workshop that we have on the 17th of August, that's a problem for me.
Well, that, that's to set the tax rates, so we?
So I could just?
We, we need information from you on?
Right, so the 3rd, based on?
It's too early.
The STAR issues that we had last year, and technically, the state can change equalization rates up to the 15th. Generally, they don't, but they can.
That's right, I remember, we had to put, push it way back.
Right, because the STAR was incorrect. I think they got the, everything worked out, but I always like to have a little bit more buffer, so more mid-August.
Would it, Sue, would it work out if we went the next week? Or is that too late for you, Brian?
That, that would be too late. Generally, generally, that, anytime that week, it, I mean, it doesn't have to be on a Thursday night. If we did it on Tuesday, I mean, though, I, I just wanted it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of the 15th.
Does the 15th work for you, Sue?
Yeah, we're just having company, and they're, they're coming Wednesday and Thursday.
Does that work for the rest of the Board? If we change that workshop to August 15th?
That's great.
All right, so that, it's going pretty good.
I checked all the other dates against, you know, the school calendar and everything.
Well, let's kill a couple of birds with one stone here, so to speak. If we look to October 12th, 14th, our convention, our state convention, I know, I'm, I'm interested in going.
To Lake Classic.
Yep. I'm seeing four.
And having just attended, I mean?
And having just attended, I mean, I think anyone else should go.
Well, this is the New York State.
Right, but.
But we tried to get everyone.
We could all go. Because we're going to, we're probably going to drive down. I mean, you can't really take a plane.
Yeah.
Well, a private plane, yeah.
You don't want to do that.
Can we charter a bus?
You know, we wouldn't.
A thirty man?
No.
I ride a school bus for five hours.
Like a little bus.
We have, we have some school transportation that we possibly could use.
Right, yeah. Or the mail van, yeah.
We charter, we can charter commercial, like, you know, something.
I like the idea of chartering the bus.
Well, actually, it's probably since it's in Lake Placid, it's a little bit more unique. Because lodging will be difficult.
Oh, you're going to get us great lodging.
If we're not on it right away, there's, there's limited.
Cindy, she's good.
She's good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We are presenting. Webster is presenting.
Yep.
On Thursday.
Cindy, why don't you make reservations for everyone?
Okay.
We'll send the whole board. And if they can't, you know, at least get the reservation.
It's easier to cancel somebody and then add.
Yeah. So make it for the, for the whole board on there.
Say registration starts June fourteenth.
Yeah. And by June fifteenth, it's filled.
So we'll, we'll talk about how much, how many other people are going to be going, because I know Brian and I will be presenting.
The weekend before.
Something. Technology.
The technology.
I think.
Zimmer, Montamer.
Okay, yeah. So we'll probably need a couple of extra rooms for the band of coconuts that we have.
Right.
The only other date we probably should add, and we could probably fill it in on a, on a workshop date, particularly maybe even the August fifteenth, is we probably really need to do a board self-evaluation. With the fifteenth, we take an extra hour?
August fifteenth.
Or, yeah, August fifteenth?
Okay.
So we'll put our board evaluation in there, too?
Yeah.
All right, so that's working pretty easily for us now. Of course, Big Mike might have, you know, some problems with it, but.
I checked the other days. The only one that, that I wondered a little bit was the January fourth, just because it's so quick.
Being so, so quick.
But it, it helps all the other days fall into line with, you know, two meetings a month and not interfering with the February and the April break. And we are coming back to school, I think it's January second, right? We just have the first off. So it'll be three days, so. When you look at it in relation to the other meetings, it makes sense. And then July fifth, probably do not want to have our reorg on July fifth. You might have a few people absent.
That has to be within the first ten days, correct?
Right.
So we can use, we can move it to that Tuesday, following week?
Let's look at that. See what. That's in eighteen, what? Tuesday's the tenth, yeah.
Tenth, so it fits in the qualification of when you have it.
Does it?
Would that be better?
You could either go early or if you wanted to do it right on the, the third.
But the, the fourth is not.
But people start taking their vacations that Fourth of July weekend, and, you know, it's going to be a.
Be able to do that later is better.
All right. So let's do it on the tenth. Okay? We all set? And just one other question. If you look at the Tuesday, April seventeenth, we had the special meeting with BOSI's. I'm just wondering, because it's been mentioned to me by Tom Nusbeck a couple of times, is the board at all interested in visiting BOSI's? It's just something that he keeps wondering if we would like to take.
On any particular day?
On any, any, yeah, but we'd have to set it up. I just saw the BOSI's budget, and I just thought, you know.
And it reminded you, okay.
A future, future thing to consider. All right.
I'd like to go during the day.
When you see the kids?
Yeah. I mean, if we could just send two or three people.
Okay, this is the first reading. We've made some adjustments. So we have a motion to accept the first reading with the added adjustments and whatever we did to it. Thank you, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Okay, so we took care of that. We took care of the conference. And we're now moving into our policies. We have a number of them. Sue?
Yeah, let me just get my computer back going. See, there we go. I know it's hard to match the Oak Free Award, but this will be the second most exciting thing in, in our agenda. We've been, oh, sorry, third. The budget, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
Nice job, Sue.
So, as you can see, the board, the policy committee. The policy committee has been very busy, and we have a lot of things to talk about tonight. I, do we want to vote on, vote on them all at once or, or, why don't we just start? If you have any questions, and then we'll see if it looks like there's going to be any controversy, then we can, you know, we can vote on them separately.
Pull that one out, yeah.
Okay, we'll start with forty, I'm sorry, ten forty, and that's nomination and election of board members. The only real significant change is here, we changed the policy to note that we vote electronically now. So not a big deal.
Right.
The next policy.
Forty forty?
Forty forty. Purchasing Responsibility. The only changes here are on titles of people. Chief Financial Officer and Chief Financial Officer. So those are the only changes there. Let's see.
Fifty-one sixty has been combined with forty ninety.
Well, we have forty forty. I was just going to do them in order. Forty forty.
This is, you're doing them, oh, okay.
Yeah. Forty forty, purchasing responsibility, again. Oh, I'm sorry, I just did that.
Yeah.
Sorry. You know, yeah. Sorry about that.
I was going the way the computer did.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. You're right, Mr. Suffolletto, yes. You're always right. Yeah. So yes, we combined these two policies, accidents and insurance, just because it was recommended by Brian, and he thought it just made sense. And he also ran it by our school attorney, and they thought it made sense as well. So you can see the elimination of one and the insertion of the language. No change in intent, just organizational, in making sure we're in compliance. Just speak up if you have any questions.
No.
Okay. Next one is district investments.
There any changes there?
Actually, this one, we broke into two, correct? So that one, we.
We separated out one investments, one reserves.
Right. So it was one policy. Now it is going to be two policies.
So there's really no change in forty-ten, other than you divided it?
Right. I mean, there's a little more specific language here than there was in our previous one, but really, just to clarify.
More, more meat into the reserve fund aspect of expectations on policy there. That, that's really the change. Not, not much on the investment.
Right.
That stayed relatively the same, but we added more to the reserve fund policy.
Just so there's no ambiguity. And also talked a little bit about having a.
What, what do we mean by that last sentence? The district may engage independent experts to monitor our reserve funds and activities. Aren't you our expert, Brian?
Yeah, I am, but at any time, you can, you guys have direct line.
Oh, you're saying that if.
To our auditors or to anybody else, to.
Independent person.
An independent person that you could reach out to.
All right.
The auditors work for the Board of Education.
Yeah. And you also see that there'll be a periodic review and annual report, which Brian does for us.
Right, that's something we started doing.
Started doing.
With the update in January.
Just keeping us informed.
And that should probably be made known to the audit committee. You know, because I don't think they, well, they don't understand that yet. Okay, continue.
Okay.
Oh, Gatsby.
Well, no, the next one is the conference travel.
No, but Gatsby was part of that.
Yes, Gatsby was part of that. And this one really is just more, more specific, just to eliminate ambiguity, so people really understand when they're going to go on a conference or something. Their responsibility, as well as what the district will do. The next one, Title I programs. A few minor changes here, but we'll be making more changes next year when we receive guidance on the changes to ESSA. But just a few to make sure that it's, the abbreviations and such are accurate. And also involving parents. It was actually being done at the school open houses rather than at shared decision-making There are two transportation policies, very minor adjustments. We consulted with the head of transportation. And just for school bus safety, just changed the, the title of the person.
And you do it electronically, right?
Yes. Yep, that's for the second policy. The first one is real, is, and just, actually, the title of the person and the servicing. And then in the second policy, it was the fact that the schedules are sent out electronically. So that is, that are, that's the changes for all the policies. Does anyone have any questions again at this point? No?
Well, in that case, we need to have a motion.
Motion.
To accept all of them, right? As a first reading.
As a, as a first read.
Yep.
Someone?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they carry for the first reading.
Right, so the, the next reading will be at the next regular board meeting. I believe that's May twenty-fifth. And that will conclude our policy work for this academic year.
All right, thank you, Sue. We don't have any old business to conduct tonight, so we'll move right into our school liaison reports. Linda, anything to report?
I know, it feels like it's been a while. There is, the last Plink South meeting will be on Tuesday morning, so it'll be with the fifth-grade reps for the end of the year. They have several activities going on this month. It's a very busy month. They have their ice cream social is on Friday from seven to nine. They have teacher appreciation, staff appreciation will be all next week. So each day, they will be focusing on expressing their gratitude for the staff. There's also a plant sale Thursday and Friday. And then there will be the Sweetheart Ball, which is for all the girls and their special role models on May nineteenth. And a Red Wings game is on the twenty-seventh. So pretty busy.
Thank you. Tammy, anything?
Many of the same events. There's literacy night combined with an ice cream party, Mother's Day plant sale, the teacher appreciation luncheon was today. There's a free family skate tomorrow at the Webster Ice Arena from six to seven-thirty. And the next meeting is May fifteenth at six-thirty. So summer, or spring concert, so ramping up. All the end-of-year activities are taking place.
Thank you. Jan, anything?
I haven't been to one more since then.
Yes, the Schlegel calendar is packed with year of the end, end-of-the-year activities. Family Fun Night is tomorrow night, and they're having Candy Bar Bingo. Sounds like a good idea. PTSA meeting next Tuesday, Mother-Son Dance, May twelfth, concerts on the seventeenth and the twenty-second, band and then orchestra, respectively. And also, coming up is the Mother's Day plant sale.
Thank you. Tuesday's a very busy day, because Clem South is having their PTSA meeting at seven o'clock, and this is one that was not on the calendar. So this is a special meeting that's going to happen. All right, let's move into Monroe County stuff. On Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, at five-thirty, Shadow Lake is the annual meeting for the Monroe County School Boards Association. The executive committee has approved the budget. They have approved the candidates for next year's office and a resolution allowing Victor to be a non-voting member. So if you attend that meeting, you'll be voting on all of these proposals. I know Sue's going. I will also be going, so Cindy, you'll need to register me. Jan's going. Tammy? And yeah, Cindy will do that for me. All right, legislative met yesterday. They're adding an additional meeting. The purpose of this additional meeting is to examine the pros and cons of a constitutional So if Ann can't attend, I definitely think that's one that I'd be interested in. I don't know if anybody else wants to go.
Yeah, Tammy ended up attending.
I would go. I did go.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I would, too.
No, and there was quite a bit of discussion about what to do, because convening, convening a convention isn't all good news. So there's a lot that can be undone and a lot of things that are kind of buried, so there's going to be more.
It's very expensive. Three million?
Three hundred million.
Three hundred million? Two, three hundred million, two?
That was the number that was dropped at the meeting.
To have the convention?
Yep. And then things can still not even change and still spend that money. So it was decided that everybody's going to do more research about the pros and cons to have a June meeting, because this requires more discussion. And so, yeah, if you want to go, also.
There's also discussion as how to become a representative.
A delegate?
Our delegate, rather.
Right. Who the delegates are, where they would come from.
We know the politicians will probably be the delegates.
Right.
So the majority will probably not want to change, and the minority will want to change.
And be aware of what could happen as a result of that, so, yeah. So that'll be an interesting meeting.
Yeah.
Labor relations. We heard from legal counsel from BOSI's, too. They discussed the times and steps necessary to prepare for negotiations. They also discussed the parameters, such as the tax cap and structural budget deficits that impact negotiations, as well as how to access the true value of a contract, both the current and future contracts. And if you'd like to view the presentation, you can access it at the Monroe County School Boards Association, members-only site. Information exchange. Linda, Tammy, do you want to do that, or, I mean, I can do it, too.
Well, because we were both right. Technology.
Yeah.
So East Arundecoyt was the presenter, and they talked about the impact of having devices that go to and from home for a lot of kids, and they are fifty-three percent free and reduced lunch. And for a lot of the families, that is the technology that's in the home. So it's been taken very good care of, and so they had a lot of good news to share about that.
And it was very similar to what we were doing.
Mm-hmm.
All right, also, NISBA is honoring school board members at its appreciation reception on Wednesday, June twenty-eighth. It's at the Memorial Art Gallery from five-thirty to seven-thirty. If you want to go, I guess you could ask Cindy make reservations. I know I will be attending. I don't know if anybody else is interested in that. All right, we'll move into our standing committees. Audit, doesn't have anything on?
You'll be getting an email Monday.
Okay.
We're just having our prelim audit done this week, so we'll set that up for the end of the month.
Policy was just done today.
Yeah.
Budget advisory, we didn't really hear from them.
We had our last one just before our last meeting, last Thursday, before we went to the greenhouse, so.
But you really are the, your presentation is really takes care of the budget. And anything for strategic plans, Sue?
We're having a meeting, actually, on vote day, to just go over the presentation that we're going to be doing, doing for the board, and did anybody see any of the preliminary results? You did, Mike.
Yes.
And actually, they weren't the correct results.
Oh, okay, wow.
So.
Correct results are actually a little bit better.
Yeah, the results are actually better, they didn't adjust the data for the?
From our survey results?
Do not, no answers.
Okay.
So that's what's been incorporated, so we're just getting that ready for the board. And are we doing that? I'm just looking at this calendar here.
Is that under metrics?
Well, we have metrics, and we have metrics and NWA grid on the 25th, and then the 8th, we have survey results. Are we doing them separate?
I don't know, maybe we could talk about that at the next?
Yeah, I'm thinking we should do them together.
Yeah, because we can get rid of a meeting.
Yeah, it's the same stuff. I mean, it's just such a busy time of year, and there's so many things going on, so, or we can, we'll decide.
Yeah, yeah, that, actually, that's a really good idea. We should plan on combining, because it just makes sense to combine.
So which one do you want to combine it into? That would be the question.
Which date?
Because there's the 25th, and there's the 8th.
I think, kind of, we're going to be the one, we're ready to be the one, wait a minute.
Well, here's, here's a problem. We got a problem. We got a problem. We have something planned on the 25th.
Afterwards, the board meeting.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
So, we'll do it on the 25th.
It's not a board meeting, it's a board workshop, so let's do it the 25th.
Yeah, we're doing it the 25th. But then, will, will there be anything we need to vote on, because then our next meeting wouldn't be until July? And we're doing a reorg on July 6th. I'm just worried people aren't going to be here, while we have a quorum.
Isn't it July 11?
No, that was, that was next year.
That's next year.
The calendar we were looking at was for next year.
I was wishful thinking.
Okay, so this, yeah, this year, we better make sure we're going to have a quorum on
There's another meeting, June 8.
June 8, there's June 8, and then July 6.
We, we got to have a regular meeting somewhere, we got to.
We're going to have to have a meeting, because there'll just be stuff that you'll need us to vote on.
Yeah, there's some end-of-year business items.
Sure, okay, and it can be short, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, most of them are going to be?
So, why don't we then?
Let's still combine them, because it's a regular meeting.
We'll combine the topics.
And we wanted to do survey, we wanted to do all those three as workshop topics. So let's do those three as workshop topics.
On the 25th.
And we'll do the June, whatever that meeting is, June 8th, just for some business, end-of-year business things that Brian can do.
And it can be short.
It'll be a 45-minute meeting.
Some big things, and?
And you know what? We may, by June 8th, may have a few contracts for us to discuss and approve.
Okay.
Very hopeful that you'll have all of them that night.
Right. Yes, that'd be good.
Okay.
So the problem with June, July 6th is we don't know?
Yes.
Who's going to be on the board, so it's going to be hard to plan that meeting, and it's already hard because it's a holiday week, so?
That's a Thursday, though, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, a lot of people might be away. So maybe, Cindy, you could send out an email asking the current board members if we're going to be here.
But then, let's see, 6, 7, 8, 9, you got to have that day, because then you're going past the deadline for having a reorg.
Right. Well, we just, but we still need to have a quorum.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
This happened last year, too.
I'll be gone on the 4th, but I plan to come back, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have four people.
All right.
Up and down, number one.
Okay, so we're all set on that? So just to make sure on the dates, we have a workshop on May 11th, we have a workshop on May 25th, which we're combining, and we have our regular meeting on June 8th. Okay?
What'd you say about May 11?
May 11th, we have a workshop.
Next week, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Then we have one?
Isn't the 11th Wednesday?
Nope.
No?
No, because the 10th, the 10th is the Wednesday.
Yeah.
Remember, I was going to show up on Tuesday, but you said show up on Wednesday, so now it's going to be a 3rd.
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's clear on that?
11, yes.
Okay, great.
We have the workshop.